Forcing people to come on their purple.
Yeah. You hear my little ticks.
Oh, you did something fun.
I like peanut butter.
I did, attractive dance.
Okay, dancing or skiing, I mean, you're kind of a fabulous dancing.
Right? That's right, not a good dancer.
They have should go ask. It'd be good dodging today's smell, but Thursday we'll get.
I missed an folder, I missed out. No, okay.
Where is it?
It's just in the Noah folder. So, no, okay.
We're doing the minutes by date?
Yes. Four sets. Four sets of notes.
So I've been doing candy all day. Let's go over the battle times.
You're gonna read three separate ones. Ken letter, Lauren letter, Tom straighter letter. I'll call on him.
One is double sided. Yeah, and few, I have to read. There's quote references.
Um, well, what she said in her email was that she didn't think the references were necessary. But we have them anyways.
Just, I know, would you do the meeting minutes, would you? Acknowledge that you did. Trying to find the words to whatever.
I think I've done it like three times.
Yeah, I mean, it's for in the future, some people know. Respectfully submitted whatever. That's more candy.
Been to the fancy new Dunkin' yet?
No, no, I'd have to get up that way.
I used to go on the Stargobell.
Same old Dunkin', so. Don't like Dunkin' no much.
I like it too much.
They grow like weeds.
You're gonna read.
Do you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
I can go make a copy. Is that a free copy or do you use, so?
No, just use it. That's from the. Do that during the.
Then I'll put down the two. Then I'll put down.
It's four o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting in order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with limitations just as strong.
For those of you that are coming in just a little bit late, there's a sign in sheet over there. Because it's not always clear when you look at the meeting review on YouTube that we, we copy every, we record every meeting on YouTube. Uh, and unfortunately, we don't always state the date. And sometimes when it's up on YouTube, it's not showing the date, so I would like to make sure that it's clear. For the record, this is the select board meeting on February 1st, 2023. First on the item on the agenda is assessors meeting. Our plan was to review a taxes updatement request. That is not prepared at this point for us to look at. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's an update on the search for an assessor's agent. Uh, Amy Dunn, who had served as our assessor's agent for a few years, has left the employment of the town through resignation, which was effective 31st of December. She stayed and is continuing to stay through the end of February to help the town clean up a couple of loose ends on some projects that she was working on. Three select board members in a special select board meeting through, did talk to a assessor's agent candidate. And that individual has submitted a proposal. The challenge that the town is faced with is we're, we had started the project for a revaluation, tax, tax revaluation in the town. Uh, under Amy Dunn's supervision. The field work is complete, but the individual that has submitted the proposal has declared that he is not interested or is disinclined to take on the responsibility of continuing the appraisal of the assessment, excuse me, the revaluation. So with that, we have to make a decision was whether or not we'll accept his proposal to be the assessor's agent. And if we do, we're gonna have to go out and find somebody else to do, continue the revaluation project. We're into the revaluation project currently. In rough numbers, thirteen thousand dollars. That was the amount of money it costs the town to have each individual property reviewed, measured, visited. It would be a shame to lose that data and that information, so I guess I'll ask some guidance from the select board on what you think you might want to do for this particular situation.
I think that we need to make sure that the candidate is willing to work with the revale information we've put together since he's not doing it himself. Because I got the idea that that might not be the case.
Yeah, I agree, I think we need to settle this before we make a decision on who we hire as an assessor's agent. However, we do that, I don't know, more conversation with that person and, you know, see what his thoughts are. You know, maybe reach out to Amy and see what her thoughts are about it, but I don't think we should be hiring somebody who will have to spend another, whatever, thousands and thousands of dollars to go back and do what was already done.
I did meet with Amy yesterday on an unrelated matter. And after that particular meeting, she and I chatted a little bit, she, she has no interest in staying with the town to do that project. As she describes it, it's a heck of a lot of work. Would require more time than she has available in her already busy schedule. The individual that we did meet with as a candidate has other towns that he is an assessor's agent for, one of them being South Thomaston. And his interest was in coming to the town to work with the town as an assessor's agent. But the amount of time that he is available in his schedule is not gonna be conducive to him taking the assessor's job and managing or overseeing the review. As he said, as he, he basically said the same thing, maybe so, a lot of work. So from hearing the two of you, we, we, at this point, we do not wish to enter into a contract with that individual.
Right, until we see, you know, what, what we can do, I mean, who else may be out there, isn't, I think the town of Rockland is being, they're gonna do a reassessment, aren't they?
Well, eventually, who you believe when you read the articles.
Two hundred thousand dollars, or something like that, part of it of money. And I think, I think also at Appleton, I read something about Appleton the other day too, that they're considering that, so, you know, maybe it's a small town like Appleton is doing it, we could reach out to find out who is doing that, and maybe, you know, get something done, but I think we need to settle that, you know. We just need to know which direction we're going, and I don't think we do right now.
So, it is, is that a consensus that we don't want to enter into a contract with this individual at this time?
Well, I just wanna make sure that he would be willing to work with the revale information if someone else has done it instead of him, if he says no, then obviously, there's no sense.
Well, he doesn't want to do it anyway.
I know he doesn't want to do it.
So he's gonna have to work with someone else.
But he's, but he did make a statement about that he didn't like to work with information someone else had put together.
Well, that, that he didn't have any ownership.
He's tired to defend it.
He didn't have any ownership.
Yeah.
Well, again, until, it sounds like until we settle the issue of the revaluation, we're not gonna be able to move forward.
That's, you know, my thoughts, see what we can, what we can do.
All right, we'll continue to research options. Next item on the agenda is to approve meeting minutes, we have four sets of meeting minutes.
I missed one, I guess.
And we'll take them in chronological order. And the first set of meeting minutes that we have is from the regular select board meeting of the 6th of February, do you have the document?
I have, I, I just have one of them.
I have, sorry, one, or the one from South Thomaston that we don't have.
Right.
Oh, that's, yeah, oh, that's.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your copy, but you have the meeting minutes from the 6th?
Yeah.
So.
I'm making a motion, but we.
Yeah, I, I have just one correction before we do that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Under assessors meeting at 5:19, it says that the select board have met with a new assessor's agent, comma. That should say, the select board have met with an assessor's agent candidate. He's not, he's not a new assessor, no assessor's agent.
Yeah, just on the, the second page, under the sand and salt shed. Just got wiped out, the saw, the sand and salt shed. It's got sand and salt she, but that's all, just add a D to the she, the name of the shed.
Anything else?
I don't know anything.
I'm making a motion that we approve the minutes as amended on February 6th, 2023.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve the minutes from the February 6th meeting, 2023, as amended. Is there any discussion, seeing none, Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next set of minutes is from the special select board meeting, which in fact was a workshop, a joint workshop with the town of South Thomaston Select Board. From the date of the 8th of February, that meeting was held at the Ash Point Community School and I was really pleased with the turnout of.
Right, right, yeah, I think there's, into some points.
So we have a set of minutes that was prepared by the town clerk from the town of South Thomaston, Eleanor Stone was present. And she concurs with the notes as presented to us, and to save time and energy, we'll use this document as the minutes. Is there a motion?
Yeah, we made a motion that we approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2023, meeting with the town of South Thomaston.
Yes, I'm second, even though I wasn't present physically.
Well, you were listening.
Uh, we have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes from the joint workshop with the South Thomaston Select Board from February 8th, is there any discussion? From Huddyville?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next set of minutes is an executive session of the select board, which was held on February 15th, and the reason for the executive session was pursuant to one MRS 4056A, a personnel matter. Chair votes a second motion.
So moved.
Uh, a second matters spelled like it was Latin instead of.
Two Ts on matters. Thank you. Was that a second?
Yes, we have a motion in a second to accept the minutes from the executive session of the select board on February 15th.
During this session. Seeing none, Tom, Huddyville?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And the fourth set of minutes is also from an executive session pursuant to one MRS 4056A, a personnel matter.
Same change.
That meeting took place on the 17th of February, and there are two Ts in the word matter.
So that we approve them.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes from the executive session of the select board on the 17th of February. Any discussion, seeing none, Linda?
Yes.
So. Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any public comment on any matter? Any at all? Dick.
Good afternoon. February 13th, the planning board had a, had one of their meetings and one of the agenda items was the ordinance committee regarding two warrant articles, proposed warrant articles. The public, the planning board determined that there would be a public hearing, or we're going to have a public hearing on March 10th regarding these two articles, and there'll be two, actually two public hearings, because each one is a separate article, so they have to public here, it could be the same date and.
Think of the consecutive, right?
Yes, yeah. The notice, notice has been written for Fred to look at and then forwarded to him, and along with the articles that he gave us, he wanted us to make sure that we inserted the proper names of the different maps. And supposedly, that's done correctly, and Fred will determine that we've done correctly. That's all.
Are there any other public comments? Yes.
My name is Sarah Post, and I'm the, on the RSG 13 school board for Owl's Head. And I just really wanted to give a brief update on my experience so far on the board, since I was elected in late August. I was, immediately chose to be on the finance committee, which is now the budget committee, it's called the budget committee now, and also the student engagement task force. And so I've been attending monthly meetings for those, as well as the regular monthly business meetings, and workshop meetings, and many other committee meetings and events to get to know the teachers and the administration. So it's been going well. As we know, there's a lot of challenges with the school district, with behaviors with students, a lot of challenges for teachers, so we've been digging in deep and learning about all of the challenges, the principals come and give presentations, and teachers come, and so we learn about the good and the bad, which is, which is great, so I think this is a, a good board. We've been digging in the deep, there's three of us who are new board members, myself, and two board members that were elected in Rockland in November. We got a great orientation process through the Maine School Board Association, and I did want to mention, we did talk pretty candidly with the school board administration there about the state formula, right, why, I know that's a big question for us, why we're not receiving any money from that formula, subsidy from that formula, and she was pretty straightforward, the director there was, told us pretty candidly that there are many communities very similar to Owl's Head along the coast that are fairly wealthy and healthy and, and that are not receiving any subsidy as well, so. I know that the, we had some state representatives come speak to us, and we asked those questions as well. They are hoping to bring this state formula up again in this next session. And so I would recommend any, any community members who want to tackle this to work at the state level, because at the community level, they've, they've determined it's just too difficult, we really need to go at the state level and take a hard look at the formula and maybe bring in the income levels into that formula versus just, you know, tax base on land, so that's what the state representatives are recommending on those next steps. I have to say, I've been enjoying the process, as, as challenging as it is, it's, it's been great, we have a, I think, a really great work at RSG 13. I have a rsg13.org email, if anybody wants to email me with any concerns or questions, spost@rg13.org, or come to one of our business meetings, first Wednesday of every month, or workshop meetings, third Wednesday of every month, both of those are at 6:30.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Considering the fact that I think the number is 70% of the town's taxes go to RSG 13, it's a challenge.
Yes, it certainly is.
Any other public comments on any matter? Any at all? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Jeremy Shaw, 14 PGs Place in Owl's Head, also airport manager. Here tonight to relay the comments by Administrator Hart, he's not filling in on tonight, so I'll have to present these before. I believe these were emailed to you guys today, but I'd like to read it for the record. Where the moratorium is being proposed to be extended this evening, the county submits their, their comments through this letter. Dear Select Board Members, on August 29th, 2022, the town of Owl's Head passed a temporary moratorium ordinance prohibiting new construction at the Knox County Regional Airport for a period of 180 days. The county opposed the temporary moratorium, not only because the premise behind it was incorrect, but also because it lacked legal justification. Now that the temporary moratorium has almost expired, we understand that the select board will continue whether to expand the moratorium ordinance for an additional period. For the reasons summarized below, the select board should decline to extend the moratorium ordinance. The moratorium ordinance was placed on the town war meeting by a petition campaign conducted by airport opponents and not by the select board. Its drafters alleged that amendments to Owl's Head zoning and land use ordinances and regulations were needed to address the threat of increased noise, traffic, and environmental degradation due to pressure from the county and commercial interests to further develop the Knox County Regional Airport. Airport opponents concerns over strong development pressure for further expansion of the airport and over increased levels of noise from additional aircraft at the airport led them to organize a petition drive that resulted in a moratorium ordinance being placed before the voters of Owl's Head on August 29th, 2022, when it narrowly passed by a vote of 74 to 61. As stated in my letter to the select board dated August 23rd, 2022, the premise behind the proposed moratorium ordinance is incorrect. Knox County is not planning any significant expansion of area of the airport or intensity of its use, and so the proposed moratorium ordinance was not necessary in the first instance. The reality is that the airport does not have much remaining land available, even if the county wanted to attempt a significant expansion. Knox County simply is completing the master plan for hangar development to maximize the use of existing, maximize the use of existing airport property. The airport received planning board approval for eight new hangars as part of Phase 1 taxi lane and hangar, and hangar project, and also approval for additional 15 hangars as part of a Phase 2 taxi lane and hangar project. Many of these 23 new hangars will have, house aircraft currently located and existing at the airport. The county recently closed in the purchase of two acre Benner Lane property and hangars from the old transportation museum, which provides six hangar units within the old existing buildings. These units will be sold to individuals to be used as hangars as they are designed. The Benner Lane property is located within the existing fence of the airport and has long been put to an airport-related use, as witnessed by the three hangars that already exist on the property. There's no additional property or land within the airport property on which to build any additional hangars, and Knox County is not seeking to expand the footprint of the airport beyond its existing fence. Indeed, Knox County is working and negotiating with the town of Owl's Head to sell the Owl's Head Cemetery to the town. Knox County and the airport are also examining other airport properties that could be offered back to the town of Owl's Head. This further demonstrates that Knox County's intent is not to further expand the airport, but to use the airport property wisely, providing surplus airport property back to the town to develop a return of the tax rules. Knox County and the airport are trying to be good neighbors for town of Owl's Head. The airport is not promoting or planning for larger aircraft that could generate more noise, and there are also no other plans to encourage more or larger aircraft to operate from the airport. As summarized above, the supposed problem giving rise to the need for the moratorium never existed. The moratorium ordinance was never necessary in the first instance and should not be extended for any additional period. Furthermore, it does not appear that any reasonable progress has been made that would justify an extension of a moratorium ordinance that lacked legal justification in the first instance. We therefore urge the select board to decline to extend the moratorium ordinance. Sincerely, Andy Hart, County Administrator.
Before I go back to the audience for more public comment, we do have two letters that I'm gonna ask Catherine to read, one is from Ken Wexler, and the other one is from Lawrence Swartzball.
I'll start with the one from Ken. This is from Ken Wexler and says, I am sorry that I'm unable to attend today's meeting. Hopefully you can read this one at tonight's meeting. Dear Select Board, I am writing regarding your upcoming vote on whether to follow OHAC's advice to you to extend the moratorium for another 60 days. It seems like a perfectly logical request from the committee task by you to work to the, work on the town zoning ordinances specifically as they relate to the airport. Clearly, OHAC feels that they are getting close and want to finish their work within what we would, within what would be the extended moratorium. OHAC voted twice to request this extension. It seems too many of townsfolk that the advice of your handpicked committee would be something that would want, that you would want to follow. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, and the next one.
The next one. To members of Owl's Head Select Board, today, a vote will be called with regards to an extension of the town's moratorium ordinance. Following my update to the select board on behalf of the OHAC of February 6th meeting, Linda Post commented that the town's ordinance incompatibility with its own comprehensive plan was not a concrete reason to vote to support an extension of the moratorium. According to main.gov, a town's comprehensive plan provides the vision of a community's future. A good land use ordinance helps a community achieve its vision. OHAC has been utilizing the town's comprehensive plan and site plan review ordinance to draft an amended, or amendment addressing residents' ongoing concerns regarding airport growth and its impacts on the town. For the town's vote of the moratorium and in the verbiage of the ordinance, OHAC was tasked specifically to accomplish this. It warrants reminding, promptly following the town vote, the select, the select board removed OHAC's long, long-serving former chair and appointed two new members, one of whom is a county employee, paid to oversee the growth and expansion of Knox County Airport in Owl's Head. The basis for a re, restructuring of the committee aside, OHAC has strived to work around the challenges it was presented. For months, we have met two to three times, more frequently focused on drafting an amendment sufficient and effective in purpose to present the select board for review, to be brought to the town for a vote. Which brings us to today, OHAC recommended an extension of the moratorium. It may not to be an additional 180 days, but an extension is needed. Realistically, most procedural aspects did not happen in town in less than 60 days. 90 days seems more realistic, and I feel 180 days is unnecessary. In closing, I ask the select board to consider a comment made by the O7 2020 County Commissioners Meeting, at which Chair Page and Ms. Post were present, along with the FAA Representative, Mr., I'm gonna watch this, Nikosia Rusen?
Yeah, right.
In a reply to Mr. Rusen, Linda stated, we need to be involved in all phases of whatever is happening at the airport, and kept in the loop with everything that is going on. If you truly wish to see it as possible, the select board needs to support OHAC to complete its work, to amend the ordinance, so as to present. complete its work to amend the ordinance so as to present and mitigate future impacts from the airport. The town cannot undo what's been done or not done. There are choices that can be made to preserve and protect what we still have as residents and as a community. Please consider this in your decision today. Sincerely, Lawrence Swatzball.
And the information on the back she stated in her initial email was not necessary to read, or do we still want to read that for reference?
Sure.
Go ahead, please.
For reference, per main street statute, the moratorium may be extended if the municipality adopting it finds, A, the problem giving rise to the need of the moratorium still exists, and B, reasonable progress is being made to alleviate the problem giving rise to the need of the moratorium. The current situation, Alicehead meets both grounds for an extension on, to the, to the Two thousand and twelve site plan review ordinance, purpose, substantial development or major changes in the uses of land may affect the visual and environmental characteristics of neighborhoods of the town and general health, safety, and welfare of the community. Two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan, the purpose, to maintain the rural and marine-related character of Alicehead while also protecting its natural and rural quality from developments for all. Definition, commercial zones, to provide within the town of Alicehead the location and service used consistent with residential and rural characters of the town.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other public comments from anybody in the audience on any matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment session. Next item on the agenda is old business. First item under old business is an update on the FEMA.
Matt Dean, Code Enforcement Officer. So if you hadn't heard, there was a FEMA list, FEMA came through, did a community assistance visit, called a CAB. Twenty-one properties were placed on the list that potentially were built lower than floodplain requirements. So the town's been working on it. Last Thursday, we were able to successfully close out the CAB. So there were eight line items that FEMA requested an answer to, and we met all their requirements. A major part of this is a state model ordinance to replace our Alicehead floodplain management ordinance that's been updated by Sue Baker, and it's really important that we review it.
Sue Baker.
Big floodplain management administrator.
State.
So it's pretty important that we do the proper steps to review this ordinance, this town vote, and enact it. It will replace our current one to an updated ordinance. Right now, we have seven houses remaining on the list. Five of those.
Three more.
Sorry. So five of those remaining have been working with the homeowners, property owners. We're getting elevation certificates, V-zone certificates. They take twelve to sixteen weeks to get right now.
Can you please explain the terminology that you use?
Yep. So V-zone is a velocity zone certificate. Houses, we have AE zones and BE zones throughout the town. V are areas where there's a chance of higher winds. And then, of course, we have elevation certificates. So we're working with engineering firms and surveyors to get these, for these remaining The way it's been going, once I receive those documents, I review them, make sure they're accurate, I submit to Ms. Baker, big floodplain, John Grace at FEMA in Boston, they review, and that's what takes the houses off the list. There are two other properties that right now, we have legal matters going, we're waiting for the town attorney to just update so we can move forward on those. Wish Ken was here. I just want to say Ken did a great job, Ken Wexler. He was leading the charge before I got to the town. And then, you know, John Grace at FEMA and Sue Baker have been great helping the town of Alicehead get through this. So it's a good day.
No, I guess it's, you know, hopefully, you said that there's seven, but two of them are the ones that's involved in the legal matters or whatever. Five are, hopefully you'll.
I've been in communication with the other five property owners, and most of the engineering firms, the surveyors are just backlogged right now with everything else going on.
Yeah.
So they have to do site visits, they have to check elevations, they have to complete these forms. So that's the delay.
Right.
We addressed FEMA's concerns on the CAB to close it out.
Yeah.
Was huge. It may take us a year to get everything we need for these remaining five houses. They're okay with that, as long as I keep working on it. We're going to continue to have monthly updates with FEMA.
Good.
And.
So we're not being taken off the FEMA insurance list or whatever they were threatening to do?
At this point in time, no. We are not on probation as a town at this point. So floodplain, was it the PIP, the Federal Flood Insurance Program, at this point, will not drop the town of Alicehead as long as I continue to work on things like I have. And we do our due diligence with this new ordinance.
Tom? Matt, can you clarify? You mentioned in your early part of the report, properties that were built below the floodplain. In some instances, they were either built or renovated or.
Substantial improvements, more than fifty percent of the value of the house without the land or the dwelling without the land.
And in many of those instances of those properties that were cleared, it was found that they were pre-firm. They were built or renovated long before the rules went into place, and that's one of the reasons why they were able to be taken off the list.
Correct. And/or they had an elevation certificate and the engineer forgot to sign it, or it was dated prior to end of construction.
Technicalities in most cases, right?
In most cases, yes. Yes.
So the remaining five are still up in the air, as we discovered from a meeting last week with FEMA and Sue Baker, said Sue Baker.
We're at diversity of the engineering firms and the surveyors, yes.
So as it relates to the two properties that are illegal.
Right.
The reality is only one of those is, has had legal action initiated. The second one is potential, but our town attorney, Ben McCall, has suggested that we not, that the town do not pursue legal action on the second property until the first one is cleared because there's a question about whether or not, if, if the first one is found to be frivolous by a court, by a judge, that same fate may happen.
Right. Makes sense.
Tony? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thanks very much. And thank you for recognizing Ken. He held it together for us.
Yeah. Good progress.
That's the first time I think any speakers have.
Standing ovation. It's quite a journey.
It ain't over yet.
No, it ain't over yet.
Next item on the agenda under old business is to consider a request from OHAC, the Alicehead Airport Advisory Committee, to extend the airport, the current airport moratorium. You've heard the public comments, you've heard the response from county administrator. We know that Lawrence Swatzball, in her role last month, or last meeting as Chair of OHAC, requested a moratorium of one hundred and eighty days. I'm trying to remember if that was modified, the motion that was made was for sixty days.
Correct.
And that, that motion failed.
And now we have, I'm sorry, we have a request that's either sixty, ninety, or one hundred and eighty days. I'm not really sure what the request is.
Yeah. That motion from the last meeting failed, one in favor and two opposed. So you're right, Tom, the, the request is kind of mysterious at this point. Do you have the letter again from Lawrence Swatzball? Lauren states in her letter, which brings us to today, OHAC recommended an extension of the moratorium. It may not need to be an additional one hundred and eighty days, but an extension is needed. Realistically, most procedural aspects do not happen in town in less than sixty days. Ninety days seems to be more realistic, and I feel one hundred and eighty days is unnecessary. So at the last meeting, questions and comments from the Select Board wondered why haven't any ordinance drafts been created for presentation within the current one hundred and eighty day moratorium?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure that the response we got was, it wasn't sufficient to me. We fully expected that that group was going to do a lot of work in one hundred and eighty days, when in fact, they hadn't done any of that work prior to the moratorium. They talked about it a lot, but there was never any documentation that came forward in a public way. So we have a request from OHAC to consider an extension of the current airport moratorium.
If I can speak?
Yeah.
The last time I supported a two-month extension, however, we have yet to see any progress. We have no idea what they're eventually going to propose. And again, they keep referring to the problem, which I never saw existed in the first place. And I've always maintained that they could do their work without a moratorium, and a moratorium wasn't needed. So at this point, I don't think I would support any extension.
We probably should make a motion soon to discuss this, but I guess we're going to go on. No, the state statutes require is notice and hearing. Now, I don't know, there's notice, but there's no specific act, you know, there's no specific, they're not saying, okay, we want sixty days, or we want ninety days, we want one hundred and eighty days. I guess this is a hearing, that would qualify as a hearing, but I agree, state statute also requires that there's been substantial movement forward, and I've asked at least twice where they've been. Is there anything? Have they put anything together? Is there any ordinances that they can update or change or add to or whatever? There just hasn't been. So I agree with Tom, that they can still work on this without a moratorium. They could, you know, they could have done this a long time ago without a moratorium. So I don't really see the sense in going further down the road with this, so.
So is there a motion to extend the moratorium?
Well, I'll make a motion so we can have it on record that we voted. I'll make a motion that we extend it sixty days. I'm not sure of the dates. I think it ends February twenty-seventh or eighth or something, I'm not sure of the date. But I'll make that motion just to get it on the floor so we can vote one way or the other.
So you're saying I should second it so we can?
Well, that was my purpose of making the motion, so instead of just letting it die, I think, I think we, there should be a vote on it.
All right, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to extend the current airport moratorium for a period of sixty days, beginning the day following current expiration.
Right, and I'm not sure when that is. I think it's the twenty-seventh of February, but I'm not.
We've already had a lot of discussion. Is there any further discussion on that? I agree. I mean, I haven't seen any, I've heard about it, but I've not seen any, or witnessed any forward progress on, on their effort. And they had plenty of time before the moratorium was enacted. They've had one hundred and eighty days to do the rest of the work. So I'm not in favor of it either. So we do have a motion and a second. Anything else?
No.
Tom, what do you vote?
No.
Linda?
No.
Chair votes no. So let this record show that the motion to extend the moratorium at the airport for sixty days failed three to zero. Zero in favor, three opposed. Next item on the agenda under old business is update on the sale of the Grange Hall. Linda Lou.
Don't call me that. My aunt used to call me that and I hated it. It's not my name.
Miss Post, Miss Post, Miss Post. You want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, well, I've, I've put together a notice to go in the newspaper for the, the sale of the Grange Hall. So I think we just need to discover things we need to decide, and that's why I left the blanks there, you know?
So would you read it to us?
Sure. All right. The town of Alicehead is accepting bids for the purchase of Forest Point Drive, formerly called the Grange Hall. A deposit in the form of a certified check of money order in the amount of, whatever we decide, must accompany the bid in a sealed envelope marked Forest Point Drive bid. The minimum bid for the property is, if we want to make a minimum bid, the successful bidder agrees to remove the building and bring it up to code within six months from the date of transfer. Considerations may be given to extend this timeframe by the Select Board. The transfer shall occur no more than thirty days from the acceptance of the successful bid. Deposits will be returned to the unsuccessful bidders. In the event the bidder fails to complete the purchase, the bidder's deposit shall be forfeited to the town, and the Select Board may thereafter negotiate the sale with any unsuccessful bidders. Bids must be received by three thirty March twentieth at the town office and will be open at the Select Board meeting scheduled for that evening. The Select Board reserves the right to reject any and all bids. This property is sold as is and will be conveyed by quit plane deed without covenants. So I don't know if we want to fill in, you know, do we want a deposit of certain, certain amount, you know, with a certified check of money order, and then do we want to put a minimum bid? I think the other stuff is probably okay.
Usually ten percent for a deposit.
Oh, ten percent of what they're going to bid, is what you're saying?
Well, why don't we try to determine what the minimum bid should be before we try to determine what the deposit should be?
Right, yeah. And I don't know, if we had any appraisal on that building, I know we have an assessed value.
I don't think there's been an appraisal. What is the assessment?
I don't know what assessment. We'll have to look at the book and see, because it's town property, so I'm not really sure.
Can you check that for us?
Yeah, in the commitment book. I think it's, I think that they're weighed out separately. Everything the town owns, I think, is, is given an assessed value, because that has to be turned into the state because we don't tax those properties.
So question that I have, and thank you for doing this because I failed miserably.
All right, no.
Do we need to, or has this already been vetted? This lane has already been vetted by Fred?
No, it hasn't, but it, it came directly from one that was put out from the town of Cushion, I think, I believe it plagiarized, you know, just changed the town's name and stuff like that.
Don't say plagiarized.
Well, it was plagiarized. I didn't make it up from.
Cut and paste.
No, cut and paste.
So current, current assessed value is twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars for the land.
Right, well, I think the building probably.
Detracts on that.
Yeah, the building probably isn't, is not an asset at this point, it's a liability.
And it's, it's been taxed yet for.
Forever.
Forever.
Right, it's always been a town, I believe, a town building.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is, this is, the acreage is showing point one, one tenth of an acre. The land mass is no greater than the footprint of the building.
Not much, no. It's a little bit out front between the building and the road, and then there's somewhere back, and it's very wet. Yes. Very wet.
It is zone commercial.
Yeah.
Right, we've confirmed that?
Yes, yeah, it is commercial.
So, I mean, is it realistic to think that we would ask twelve thousand dollars for it, considering the work that would have to be done, whether it's going to be.
Right.
Demolishment, demolishing, or?
Yeah, it may not, if they, I know someone had spoke about putting a house there, and I'm not sure, you know? I suppose if they added on to the, to the building, they could. Then it would be town water. I don't know about the, the sewer, so I don't know. That's up to them, if that's what they want to do, they've got to bring it up. That's right. Right.
One of the questions that I have is, because it's commercial, if somebody buys it with the intent to put a small house there, tiny house, which is.
Right.
It's possible, I suppose.
Right.
We would have to change the zone.
I'm thinking, so you live in a commercial zone, can't you?
Yeah, you can. So they don't have to change it to residential?
You just can't have a commercial business in a residential.
Okay.
Right, right. The other way you can, I mean, the boatyard down here, I think that guy lives there.
Yeah.
You know?
But one could put a hot dog stand or something there, right?
Well, it's commercial.
Yes. I think it falls on our guests. It's very commercial.
There's no parking, that's the problem with it. There's no parking, it's upside of the roads. I mean, for any. I mean, for any events and stuff like that, it's really tight, so.
Do we need to put a minimum bid?
No, no, that's why I left it, you know, trying to open there.
You have an opinion on whether or not we need to put a minimum bid? I suppose we could live without it.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
I didn't know if commercial added to it, that maybe we should put fifteen thousand, but.
I think we should just let whoever is interested in it come up with something. But I think they should be, like you say, maybe ten percent of what of their bid is that they earn this money. You know, so we can, you know, rework it to that.
Yeah, we can go either way.
I mean, we can have, you know, Fred go over it, but we're gonna change the dates because that'd probably take a while.
You gotta remember, tax assessment is a lot less than fair market value or appraisal on any property.
Yeah.
Too, right? When we're talking.
Right, unfortunate.
Or it doesn't matter to me, but.
Add your commercial on the corner. Say, add your commercial on the corner.
I think just a lot of, we can, if we don't like what they put out, we don't have to accept that bid. You know, that's in here, you know, we got the right to reject any and all bids, so I would say let's see what's out there. Have someone, you know. Contact us or put in a bid to, you know, bring it in a sealed bid. But I think it's important to know what they're gonna do with it. I don't think, I can't imagine someone bringing it up to code because it's.
Do we need that? Do we need to know that if they bid on it?
Well, I think.
Once they bid on it, own it, as long as they're within code.
Right, but I think the, you know, because the insurance company has said there's problems with it because it's in such bad shape. So that, you know, I think we should have something in there that they need to get rid of it or, you know, bring it up to.
Yeah, and you've stated that here.
Yes, yes.
Right?
You know, and if they don't, if there's not time, if, you know, how things are going now with construction, we can extend that. But that's a big deal, but they've got six months, so.
And what is, what is the town's recourse if in fact a bid is successful and it would appear a year down the road, no action?
Well, we've got right here.
Dangerous buildings.
In the event the bidder fails to complete the purchase, well, that's the, yeah. That's completing the purchase. But we've given them six months and we can extend that. But maybe we should, you know, I don't know whether we should put something in there that says if they, if they don't do it and don't extend it, then what happens? I don't know. I think we're fine tuning it too much.
If it is commercial.
That looks good.
Sure.
Potentially worded permitted in six months, whether it be demolished or somebody wants to save it.
Yeah.
Just because of the current world we live in, if somebody bought it and say, wasn't handy enough to do it themselves, they may wait a year to find a good carpenter or builder to.
Right.
Or even an airport contractor to tear it down.
Right.
You never know, right? People are waiting six months, a year, year and a half to have a house built right now.
Right.
So just a suggestion, permitting, we have a mandate for either demolition.
Yeah.
Or renovation. And then.
Yeah, agrees to have a permit in, within six months.
Yes, permitted through me.
Yeah.
Permitted through the code enforcement.
That would mean, that would mean they've come in, right, they've either paid, filed for a date for a demo permit, or we have a plan of action, but like I say, potentially you could wait a year right now to find, to have a builder or a contractor.
Right.
Do some repairs. That's just the world we live in right now.
Well, once we sell it, gets us off the hook with, with our insurance carrier. It's not our problem anymore, you know, right now they're saying this, you know, it's in bad shape.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's.
And as Tom pointed out, if in fact the successful bidder fails to permit it or do anything with it within a reasonable period of time, then state statute for dangerous building kicks in.
Possible, right, right, exactly. Yeah.
Because right now I would consider it, I mean, we haven't, we haven't labeled it as such, but.
Right.
I'm sure it qualifies as dangerous building, under state statute.
I have a better note.
You'll have company with you with full legs and mask.
Go two in, two out.
Yes.
I don't know if historical value would add anything to the.
Well, well, if they could tear it down, it's, it's too bad because that was a school, it was the town, you know, community government. It's a Grange Hall for a number of years, and it's got a lot of history there, but no one has any money unless state wants to give us.
Do you want to work with a code enforcement officer to modify the language on that and bring it again to the next meeting?
Okay, so we'll just have to change the date from the bids, but we can do that.
Yeah, and the language that Matt is suggesting, I think makes sense.
Yeah, I do too.
Another two weeks, I think, is going to.
No, no one's gonna do it now anyway.
Yeah, you may have to change the date from March twentieth to a date later.
Right, right, yeah.
But I'm pleased to see that we're making some progress on this because.
Yeah, there's been some interest in it as you know.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. Next item on the agenda. Under old businesses, to update on the search for administrative assistant deputy clerk, deputy tax collector, which is all one, one position. So the select board met in executive session with two candidates for this position within the last week. And we have offered the position to an individual. And that individual has notified the town that she is prepared to accept the position. And so the chair will entertain a motion to vote on appointment. Make a motion, make a motion that we appoint Christine Fee to the position of administrative assistant deputy town clerk, deputy tax collector.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Christine Fee to the position of administrative assistant deputy town clerk, deputy tax collector. Is there any discussion? Christine has notified me that her available date will be the eighth of March, before her current employer to. She's already given her notice, but it's a lengthy two week notice. So she'll begin on the eighth of March. Any other discussion? I think she'll do a great job. I was very pleased with both candidates, but I think in this case it's going to be the right one. Without further discussion, Linda, do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes. Next item on the agenda under old businesses, a report on the joint workshop between the Alseth and South Promising Select Boards. Several people that are in the audience this afternoon were at the meeting, joint workshop between the two select boards. Any, any comments that I've received since then, and there haven't been very many, but they've all been positive. The question is whether or not the town of Alseth wishes to continue discussions of that nature with the town of South Promising.
Yeah, I agree. I think there was, you know, some very good ideas coming out of it because nothing's going to happen overnight. There was some, some good suggestions, and I think we should, you know, keep in communication with them.
All right, so if the select board wishes, I can schedule another meeting, which will be again a joint workshop with the two select boards. We don't need to vote on that, I don't think.
No. We don't know when it's going to be or anything, so.
I'll let you know. Next item on the agenda under old business is an update regarding the sand and salt shed repair. Contract, I've been in touch with the contractor a few different times since their promise to begin work on fixing the salt and sand shed on the sixteenth of January. They have visited the site again after, long after the proposal. They had to come up, do measurements, and ensure that the proper equipment materials would be available for the repair of that structure. I don't have a new date that they'll be back, but they promised that they'll be back. We're very fortunate that in the heavy wind storm pre-Christmas, that we didn't incur any further damage on that. So that's, that's the update at this point. Next item on the agenda under new business, review information regarding storm-related erosion adjacent to Holiday Beach Road. Yes, sir, Kermit.
Yes, sir. Kermit, I'm counting seventy-two Holiday Beach Road, Alseth. I met with the planning board last week to get an update of the erosion, which is what we're talking about here, the erosion along the bank on Holiday, just off Holiday Beach Road. They were passing along photographs. Did you get those?
We have not received photographs.
Okay, I'll give you my copy and I'll just talk about it from memory.
Can I separate these from the staples?
Sure.
Go ahead, please.
So. I think we're all familiar, most of us were probably here when it happened, but there were some major storms that took place within the last couple of months. At one point, there were three storms within three days of each other. The last one of which did considerable damage because it occurred at high tide, when the winds were the highest, and did more erosion on the bank along the control than I've seen in the fifteen years I've been here, just in one event. When my wife went down to the beach, she noticed that there was quite a bit of erosion to the point where the two trees that are between the road and the beach itself, they're right there along that narrow part of the bank. You've got a picture of that there. The root system was compromised. So I called Bill Leffin. First I called Eric Fullerton, he does a lot of yard work and things like ours, and he came over and looked at it and he said, it looks pretty bad. So I called Bill Leffin and he came over and looked at it and said, yeah, we should take it down. If it fell over, good damage, not only the bank, but also the part of the road.
For the record, just in case anybody doesn't know, Bill Leffin is the elected road commissioner.
Right, right. So Bill called Burner Tree Services, which the town uses quite a bit. And by the way, Bill came over within an hour after I called him, he wanted to take a look at it. But he called Burner Tree Services, they came and cut it down within a week. So that tree's gone. There's a picture out there and it shows it has been cut down. There's one tree left standing where the bank is slightly wider than it was where that tree was cut down. Anyway. I just looked at the pictures. I'll give you the timeline here too because. This is some background information. One of the things that because of another issue that our family's dealing with, we've had a number of discussions with Bill Flint before he passed away, with Ed, before he passed away to gather information in the Holiday Beach area. Some of that information is on this timeline that I just gave you a copy of. And in that timeline, you can see the first house in the area was eighteen eighty-four. I'll go through this quick. Nineteen fifty-seven, the Holiday Beach Road was taken over by the town of Alseth. In sixty-eight, the annual town report had roads and bridges, urban step Smith, Holiday Beach Road, did some dozer, gravel, granite, labor work for twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Nineteen seventy, some of you probably remember this, I don't, I wasn't here, but there must have been a storm similar to the one that we had recently. Because what happened, it wiped out the, the corner of Holiday Beach Road where it turns right in front of the water. And it had to be built up four or five feet. You see a note there at the bottom of the timeline that says, we got funds from the federal government to fix that, and a lot of the fill for that came from the airport runway, which was being torn up to level with and make it nicer at that time. And you also notice in nineteen seventy, and I'm not sure that this coincides with the same timeframe this took place, but I'm guessing it did because in the annual town report it said, town road improvement, George Seawall Stone, seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. State of Maine, Holiday Beach Seawall, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and six cents. So Seawall has some major work that was done after that storm did damage to the corner of Holiday Beach Road. Then the tearing of the road actually took place by mariners in nineteen seventy-three, along with six other roads, actually five roads and the fire station. So the total of two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So if you look at the bottom there, this is a summary made of what happened in Holiday Beach with its last major event. Bill Leffin said it was a six war storm and recorded history, high winds and high tide, major erosion on the Seawall. The tree next to the road was taken, was, lost a lot of its roots and the other roots were exposed, so Bill Leffin had it taken down. The cliff has been eroded over the years with the riprap continuing to shift down towards the water to the lower part of the bank. The riprap repair, riprap repair needs to be done to prevent further damage to the bank and further potential damage to the road if it eroded in that part. So in the pictures there, you see pictures of what the road looks like today, the tree that was taken down. You can see some of the damage, especially where that tree is. The last two photos in there show where the bank was dug out to the point where it had to be cut down, that tree had to be cut down, where the roots were exposed. The other tree seems to be okay at this point. But the first picture there is a Google map picture that shows a red dotted line that's twenty-five feet, which is a right of way area for most roads, which takes it pretty, from the center of the road down the bank, pretty much to the bottom of the bank. So what's happened next is I talked to, I talked to Dick Harbor, I talked to Bill Leffin, and I talked to Frank Ross. Frank suggested I go to Prop Marine, get a quote to see what it would cost to actually repair the revetment that the town put there back in early seventies or around nineteen seventy. And I got that, I'll give you a copy of it. Just got it this morning as a matter of fact. So the. Seven hundred and, what was it? Three hundred and fifty-two dollars and six cents back in nineteen seventy, in two thousand twenty-three, fifty-three years later, is about a quarter million dollars. They said two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars if you do it from the water. If you can do it from the shore, it's twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars less. So bottom line is, it's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, just over, to do the revetment repair work. I gave this to Frank. He's going to submit this to FEMA, to see if he can get FEMA funds. And that's where it stands today.
Yeah.
I want to make you aware of it because the town did put riprap there at one point, fifty years ago, fifty plus. And we'll have to, hopefully we can get federal funds to fix it, and if not, I'd consider what we need to do at that point. Any questions from select?
So. Ash Point, Trail's End was recently worked on. I think it was JBI did the work. Why, why JBI? They did all the work from the land side. It's a different project. Yours is, Holiday Beach is a larger scope, for sure. I'm just wondering if we should go to JBI and also get.
Sure. Well, I went to JBI first, and that was right where I thought of Bill Leffin.
Yep.
And they said we'd have to have an engineering survey done first, which is going to take a few weeks or months. We've heard how long it takes to get some of that work done nowadays, and most of us can build her.
Prok has it so much.
Yeah, so Prok has it so, that's why Frank, I think, asked me to go see them. But it would take a few weeks or maybe even a few months to get that if we go to JBI, but I'm willing to do that. That's what you think would be a good thing.
But they can't work from the shore, can they, JBI, because Prok has all.
I don't think they can.
Prok should work from both sides, the shore or the water.
Right, I don't know if JBI can work from the shore.
I don't think, I don't think they can, but.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because, I mean, even Prok is saying if it's done from shoreside, it's going to be less.
Right.
So they may have it in their mind that it's possible.
What's asking about.
I talked to the estimator in JBI, this goes back probably a month together, so that was the first one I went to after we had the tree fit. So, that was the first one I went to after Bill had the tree taken down. But I can follow up with them.
When did I go over? Was just after Bill arrived?
Just after Bill had been there.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a few weeks.
No, no, it needs to be addressed, certainly.
Well, the concern at this point is, and I know Bill said the same thing, is that if we have many more storms like that, the erosion could be to the point of actually damaging the road. And that's, there's only one road in, one road out.
Undercut the road, something like going on some places.
Lynn.
I just wanted to clarify.
Lynn, if you would please.
Oh, sorry, Lynn Chaplin, you can see Gimp Point Road, Owlshead. Is Holiday Beach, is that a public Owlshead owned beach?
Oh, the beach? Well, I mean, is that, well, that's, the beach has really not much to do with that.
We're going to refer it up. She has some information that we may not all have. Anything else, Lynn?
No, that was a.
Dick.
Richard Carrick, I don't know if I can prove much on what Kermit's done, but the town accepted their own, as he said, in 1957. There was no meets and bounds. It doesn't tell you where it starts or where it ends.
Right.
I did talk to Kay Ross Dodge, who held home down there many years, and she recollects when she was younger, her family had said that the road was accepted all the way to across the beach, on the land at that. But the beach was, is, like everybody says, is separate from the road. And this, I found nothing that has meets and bounds the road anywhere, except that in our roadmap, our road book in the office, states that it's .3 miles long. And if you measure that out, it goes down and across the shore and stops. And that's pretty much evident that that road does go across the front there. So, it's just a question of what the width of it is.
Right.
And maybe it can be determined. But I would suggest that you also get from George Hall and anybody else, bids to see what it would cost from, and I'm pretty sure that everything that's been down across, down at Crescent Beach was all done from the shore. At one, you know, it's not as steep, but still, all that work was done down there from shoreside. So, I think there's a possibility it could be done from shoreside. It may be a lot less expensive doing it that way.
But you're going to get down to the shore, there's a problem there. Of course, the beach, you can, Holiday Beach, how are you going to get to the shore with equipment?
Drop it down over, that's the major line.
To clarify, the Holiday Beach Road begins back and it comes down and it turns.
That's South Shore Drive, comes down and makes it.
It's parallel with the beach.
Parallel with the beach. It goes across there and there's a, we've got the name of the lane here. We can classify. Rocky Road.
Rock Hill.
Rock Hill Road, right. And then the town uses that as a turnaround.
So, currently, that entire paved road.
Yes.
The 45 degree, 90 degree is town property. It's paved, it's plowed by the town.
Yes.
And that road can't be much more than 20 feet wide. So, what's the right way?
At some points, it's 12 feet wide.
I saw, I measured, there's a number of plans with various colleges across there, but every one of them more or less shows that road at a different width. So, but on one of the plans done by the Flint family, it shows it and I measured it and it's about a broad width of 16 plus feet, 18 feet.
And they're not even on the pavement portion, are they?
No, but this is fact, may, looking from their, their plan shows part of the road of Holiday Beach Road. And that's what I measured from that. But like I say, as Kermit says, it varies and there's no, there's all kinds of preferences to a plan that nobody can find. Now, man, that supposedly sells what the world is. Even in a couple of the surveys, it says that the plan, this plan is available, that the width of the road is not available.
If I remember the conversation you and I had a week or two ago, you haven't, you, at that point, you haven't been able to determine that where the erosion is, is actually town property.
Yeah, it's very difficult to know.
So, I guess the question is, I mean, we've got to do the right thing, regardless of who owns it, try to figure this out. Because from what I saw, I didn't get out of the bluff, but from what I saw from the top side was, it's going to continue to erode over time. Eventually, it's going to wear out that road.
Yeah.
And the postures are going to be in jeopardy.
And this particular one, just to give you a reference point, Louise Flint lost a pier that she's had for decades. And you saw the culprit in Crescent Beach standing straight up. And that doesn't happen real now.
Thankfully, 100 years strong.
So, anyway, I'll look into the other bids and also Frank, I'll keep in touch with Frank Ross and see what kind of success he has with FEMA.
Yeah, he can at least get some preliminary information on the existing bid. But I think Dick was right, George Hall and JBI should be contacted. Are you willing to do that legwork?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kermit.
Gordon?
Yes.
Could I ask a follow up question?
Of course, yeah, right.
We used it, where we are in Owlshead, we have an enormous cliff that faces the ocean. And we've suffered enormous degradation due to the water coming in and we've used a lot of really big companies to come in. George Hall, I had no financial interest in George Hall, but we liked them because they actually provided a warranty that if this thing goes down in 10 years, we come back and fix it for free. And that was a real selling point, the price was competitive. With other places, but they were the only ones who said, "We will give you a warranty." So, and now.
Good point.
Why don't you have your storms ask for a warranty?
Okay.
Yeah.
Dick?
Bill George Leffin.
Thank you, Bill. In your, in your project, did they back up the dump trucks and just?
They brought in, they brought in these enormous Volvo manufactured cranes and drop rocks the size of both planes.
Was that permitted?
Just like, look before they start. I mean, there's been one.
There is a procedure that I found out in researching this, and that is that when they put this in, they put what they call a toe stone along the front down at the water level. They, they kind of scalp it out, put the stone in, make sure it won't wash out when the waves come in. They also put a fabric down and then they put small, three to four inch rock on top of the fabric and then they lay larger stones on top of that that are up to two feet in size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda under new business is to review and act on a request by the Owlshead South Thomaston, Thomaston Solid Waste Corporation to approve the negotiation of a service contract that will exceed the current time limit of 36 months to four months, to 40 months. Background on this is that the three town agreement bylaws limits the OHSTT to three years unless the three select boards, Thomaston, South Thomaston, Owlshead, approve a request in excess of three years. Three years would be through February 2026. Since OHSTT fiscal year is now June through July, they want to execute the contract through June of 2026. The organization that board is asking the Owlshead Select Board to allow them to write it for 40 months instead of 36. Both towns of South Thomaston and Thomaston Select Boards have approved the extended contract. Bruce, Sarah, will you run up, please? Tell us what we needed though.
Pretty much stated it, right, Lynn?
It's pretty cut and dried.
Pretty cut and dried. Yeah. A contract with our previous Holland runs that ran out in December 31st, on schedule. So, we were seeking bids for a new one. Like Gordon said, we changed that fiscal year to match the town's fiscal's year. So, in which case, there was going to be a full month lag. So, if we sign this contract Thursday night at our meeting, we're going to be over the 36 months of three year, which we're obligated to under the interlocal agreement. We can't enter in anything over three years. It's only like four months, it's what we're splitting here. Nevertheless, it's in writing. So, we're just seeking permission from the towns to enter in for an additional four months.
Questions?
Nope.
No, no?
To make a motion, we.
Go ahead.
Vote to approve the 40 month contract rather than the 36 month.
Second?
A motion in a second to vote to approve the adjustment to the agreement with OHSTT to allow them to write a contract for 40 months, for 40 months instead of the current allowance, 36 months. So, does this set a precedent for other projects? Or is this a one time thing, just until the fiscal year?
This is one time. If something should arise like that again, we would have to go through the same procedures.
Yeah, the fiscal year change just occurred last July.
Right.
The towns requested that we do this because they're not aligned and we were actually paying, we submitted a budget to you on January 1st. You're already halfway through your funding this year. And if we had a significant increase, now you've got to come up with that money to pay that increase that you need budget for, because you've got six months left to go.
Right.
And as we know, how 2021 and 22 turned out, everything skyrocketed. So, the towns got a huge bill for that and they weren't budgeting for it. So, we've moved up this year to match all the other towns so that they will have, they will know prior to their budget what the going to cost is going to be. By the way, we just, we are finalized now, which will have it round match first.
Tell the budget committee to get ready.
Yeah. Yep.
I've got a question for you after we have this vote. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. And you have the language on what we just voted on, make sure that it's just kind of. Question for you on the current renovation project? It's past, it's overdue at this point, we know that. What's the projected timing?
They, we were negotiating a projected time of the May 1st, June 1st, is what we're looking for. With the exception of maybe a few minor things, small items, maybe pavement. As you know, if they finish May 31st or June 1st, paving companies just got on the way. They usually don't really get paving until the 50th of May, sometimes even later. So, they may be a little late on that, but the building itself should be up and running. Scales and most of that, the bulk of that construction should be done and out of our way. It's a muddy mess over there, we know this. We apologize for that, but anybody that's been around construction knows it's.
Fun season.
Fun season. And we know it's chaos, with traffic coming and going. We know your metal can is kind of a pain, but please bear with us. It's all going to be resolved. I think you'll like the metal can's new location when it's done. It's up where the, it's going to be up on the hill, not where it was before, off to the side, but right here where the second can is. When that's removed, the metal can will be there. You'll be able to back right up to it, throw it into it, and you won't be in competition with the big trucks. As it stands right now, you have a dump, you have a dump truck here and your metal can was here. If this truck is here, you boxed it in, or you couldn't even get to the metal can for that matter. So, it was a big conflict. Hopefully, that's going to be resolved, you'll have free reigns for the can. So, your paces is going to pan out, I think, for you.
We hope so.
We hope so.
Anything else, Bruce?
No.
Okay, thanks, Bruce.
You got some easy.
Next item on the agenda under new business is to discuss the closing of the town office on March 30th for training. Can you tell us what's going on?
There's a training in Ibiza, it's for the annual audit. I think it's smart for both Eleanor and I to both go. So, we both have the cross training, but we're both knew it, both things we're doing, so.
Well, we'll have a third person then, so I wonder if, you know, that's a month from now, whether we need to, you know.
Well, if she started March 8th, she might be able.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, it's fine, you know, what are we going to do with her on that day? I don't know, maybe she should go too.
Well, I certainly wouldn't send her home for the day. I mean, if she's not going to go to the training, then she should still be here and catch phone calls.
Yeah.
We might still have to lock the doors because she might not be up to speed. She might be up to speed at that point.
Right, yeah, she might not be able to do any registration.
So, what is the training again? Tell us, it's.
It's audit training.
The audits.
Right.
Yeah, the auditors in there and a lot of, probably half of it's more stuff for the treasury side.
Yeah, no, yeah, definitely you and Eleanor should go and perhaps even, you know, you and Nukel.
At some point, isn't the administrative assistant also the assistant treasurer?
Yes.
Deputy town clerk, deputy tax clerk.
But it's deputy treasurer, deputy registrar.
So, perhaps all three of you should go.
Yeah, it wouldn't, I think it'd be a good idea for all three of you.
I don't want to push her and everything too fast.
Rotra.
Right. I think she's bright enough that she can absorb that.
All right, so.
Would you like, I'll make a motion that we close the office?
We can decide later on how many.
On March 30th.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to close the office to the public on the 30th of March to allow training for staff. Any discussion? See you, Linda Hurdor.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Okay, we're down to adjustments to the agenda, we have something to add.
Okay, I'm making a request that we add an agenda item for consideration.
It always helps to know what we're voting on.
Well, we have to, we have to do that first.
I know, but it may not be something I want to add if I don't know what it is.
It's a vacation.
Alright, vacation.
Thank you.
So, we, in order to add it, we need unanimous consent.
Right, we need unanimous consent.
So, we have a motion in a second to add to the agenda a request for vacation time through unanimous consent. Tom, Hurdor?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. So, we're adding this item to the agenda under new business, vacation requests from Eleanor Stone.
Right, exactly. I would make a motion that we approve her vacation request, which is going to take place in April. I don't know if we need the dates and all.
How much for how many days?
It's, well, it's April 12th until 20th, so it's eight days. Well, cumulative of six, because they only work four days.
Six work days.
Six work days.
Were you aware of this and are you?
Yeah.
You're going to be around.
I'll be around.
It's April, anybody, so hopefully, you know, everybody will be here.
Yeah.
Did you second that?
I made a motion.
You second that.
I'll second it, it was in the future, I prefer we not mention the exact dates.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the vacation request from Eleanor Stone for a period of six days to occur in April. Any discussion? Tom, Hurdor?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. No other adjustments, no other business at this point? Next item on the agenda is approval of signature of municipal laws.
Try the dance.
What do you mean? Yeah, no, go ahead.
I can't do it.
Can I, do you need this timeline?
Oh, you can keep that.
Okay, thank you.
This is the board we talked, where we just signed them.
Oh, you people are anything for a chance.
I'm going to thank you. Such an exciting guy.
Entertainment value.
Right, right, I do. What are you doing now? I'm going to go get this to Matt, he's still here, but we want to work this.
I imagine he's coming back on Thursday, I'm not sure.
Well, I.
She came in late. So as it relates to sewer fees, Eleanor sends out a bill to the sewer users, fifty-one parcels. Every quarter?
Yes.
And do each of those parcel owners get billed the same amount?
Well, it depends on what it reads, so.
No, what I mean is, are they, are they billed equally based on that quarter's numbers? Individual households, are they getting?
Yeah, I would believe, yeah.
Can we find out, I'd like to know that, that's something that I asked a few months ago.
Wouldn't they bill the convey usage?
Per gallon, or whatever, however they do it.
What I don't think happens is their individual, their individual output is not measured, it's a total measurement.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying, yeah. I, I don't.
They don't have a meter on each house. The flow measurements aren't taken in two different locations, but there's no meter on each house.
Oh, I thought, when I said that he had to read the meters all the time, it sounded like that it was a whole bunch he had to read, I realized it's just two.
It's just two locations. So anyway, I'd like to get more information on that.
I can see if you can forward the most recent ones, if you see.
Yeah, I don't need the, a lot of documentation, I just need to know, are the billing, is the bill that this house gets the same as this house? I realize they may be different every quarter, but fifty-one times X versus one times X, one times Y, one times A, one times B. And what that dollar is.
You would think they would almost factor in how many occupants.
I do know it's like, the standard is one forty-five, and then that they have more usage than others, it goes on.
But that's the question, is how, how would we know?
How do they, yeah.
How much each house is doing.
Right.
Yeah, you'd think that they would wanna know, is the house of one person living there or is the house with five kids? You know, they pay in the same, same rate?
Yeah, it is. Somebody, I guess it was Bill Juabon, Persh had pointed out, we wanna make sure that it's not costing the town money. We should be making sure not losing money as a result of that.
Well, we, all that's paid through the sewer, it's a separate fund anyway, the sewer fund. We, you know, we just make sure that, I mean, that's how it gets paid through, so there's money in there, but I believe still. But I know in Rockland, you, you pay according to your water usage, so those people, I don't know if they're all on city water or not. If they're on city water, the sewer bill would correspond with their water uses, that's how they do it in, in Rockland. You know, you get your sewer bill, but it's based on the, the water that you use from, you know, from the water company.
I see what you mean, yes, so there may be a meter on input.
Yes, 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 income, not output.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, that's the way they measured in Rockland anyway. I don't know, if they don't have city water and they have city sewer, maybe there's no such a thing, I don't know, in Rockland.
Yeah, and I think we should, the three of us should know more about how that works.
Right, right, but it's all, it's all their own separate money, we're not supposed to be paying anything to the town.
Catherine, I'm looking for something specific here, oh, there it is, the appraisal.
Yeah, I was rushing towards the end, I might have.
Yeah, I see the invoice from Buckland Appraisal for eight thousand, but I don't see the invoice from, from the county for four thousand. But it looks like, it looks like we are, we are gonna pay Knox County four thousand dollars for the eight thousand dollar appraisal.
So we're not paying, paying in Fred and then getting reimbursed from the county?
No.
The county's paying and we're reimbursing the county?
Right, the county was billed eight thousand dollars and they have invoiced us for half.
Okay, I get.
I don't know, it fell off somewhere. I just didn't see the backup. For the county, for the county invoice.
That's part of what's on the desk, I, I just.
Did you find that?
No, he's gone already. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm thirsty.
We have a motion that we sign the warrants as approved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to sign the warrants as approved, any discussion? Seagun, Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So you'll show that that item was added by unanimous consent for the vacation request, and we will publish the specific dates. Okay, any other business come before this group? Seagun, the chair, we have a motion for adjournment.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, please. Okay.
Isn't that fun?